Does God have an excuse to ask?
Good afternoon. Call to order, the regular session of the Newport Beach City Council, July 26, 2016. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Pieter will be late.
Mr. Oh, excuse me. Want to do public comment?
Public comments. The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on agenda and non-agenda items and are generally limited to three minutes per person. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Any public comments? Come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. After a couple of months pause, I see we're back to needing closed sessions again. So I just wanted to remind you that although the agenda announcement, this, meets the minimal standards of state law, it actually tells the public next to nothing about what questions city staff feels a need to talk to you about. And I would hope that in the future, you would consider letting your public at least know what the topics of conversation are. For example, I thought you had completed the benefit negotiations with all 10 employee bargaining groups and had secured memoranda of understanding, nearly all of which run through December of 2018, and the two oldest of which are still good through the end of June 2017. So it's surprising to see all 10 needing attention in closed session again so soon. I have no idea if the 10 employee groups have just one point of contention or, like our founding fathers, 27 or more, but in the words of Thomas Jefferson, whether required by law or not, I think a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes. Likewise, I see you're going to discuss two pieces of potential litigation. One in which the city may sue someone who is not identified, and the other in which staff is apparently afraid someone may sue the city if that party only knew the city had committed a wrong against them, which apparently they don't. In neither case, out of the infinite universe of possibilities, is the public given the slightest hint of what specific action prompted the need for a private discussion. And again, although the law may not compel you to do so, I think a decent respect to the opinion of mankind should at least encourage you to declare what the causes of those conversations are. And I think you will find that there have been past city councils that did a better job of informing the public about that. Thank you.
Thank you. See no other comments. And Mr. City Attorney, would you like to comment on the closed session? Next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to meet regarding agenda items 3A through C, including meeting with the city manager, Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, and Human Resources Director Barbara Silvini, discuss labor negotiations between the city of Newport Beach and all unions, meeting with legal counsel to discuss the initiation of litigation in regards to one matter, and meeting with legal counsel to discuss one matter of anticipated litigation where the facts are unknown to the plaintiff or plaintiffs. Thank you.
Thank you. We are in recess until 7:00 PM. All right.
Seven.
Should I do it? Good evening. You are reconvening our regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council of July 26, 2016. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present. Mayor Protem Muldoon is here. He's just not at his seat at the moment.
Mr. City Attorney.
There's no closed session report this evening, but I'd like to note for the record that all the council was present for closed session.
Okay. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Duffy, followed by the invocation by Councilmember Petros, please.
Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a posture of prayer. Your word tells us there's no fear in love, but perfect love drives out fear. We are in uncertain and anxious times now, and we're all in need of your direction and guidance. Shower us, Father, with your grace that we may know that love. In our abundant community, let us give thanks, let us practice humility, and let us share your perfect love with each other and those who are in need. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Mr. Kiff and Chief Poster, we have a presentation. Or Mr. Duncan.
Madam Mayor, council members, Assistant Chief Chip Duncan, Fire Operations. I'm here tonight to give you a brief presentation on pier firefighting. On May 20th, like most of you, I turned my TV on and I witnessed a fire up the Seal Beach Pier, and I figured I probably was going to have an opportunity to come up and speak about some incident like this happening in our town, which is a possibility. So I will go through my presentation, and we'll walk away through it. As everybody knows, we have two wooden piers in our town. We have the Balboa Pier and the Newport Pier. The Seal Beach Pier has some similarities to our pier, but some differences, and we'll contrast those as we work our way through it. Fortunately for me, when I saw the fire on TV, I made a phone call to one of my friends from OCFA, and the incident commander of that fire happened to be a friend of mine. So I immediately got on the phone with him and asked him if I could go up and walk up the pier and take a walk and then do some kind of critique with him. So I got like a firsthand experience of critique with the incident commander, which was very beneficial, and we'll talk about that, too. So here it is, the Seal Beach Fire, May 20th, 7:45 AM. The fire came in as an investigation, and the Seal Beach Police Department responded out to the end of the pier, and there was nothing showing. Fifteen minutes later, it looked like this. So from the time the fire was reported, the fire grew quite quickly. The Seal Beach Pier is 1,865 feet long, which is about double the length of our piers. Probably a little-known fact about the fire, the fire actually started underneath the pier, which is going to be important later on as we go through the presentation. The electrical fire actually started in a, in wiring that was supposed to be shut off that was incorrectly wired, that's been incorrectly wired for a long time, and finally just gave up. The other thing, too, is they actually experienced a fire in 1995 that burned up the center part of the pier, right about where the lifeguard tower is, if you're familiar with that pier. It took 70 firefighters, basically two alarms, about an hour and 15 minutes to knock the fire down. They didn't completely extinguish it, but they knocked it down. And they had one injury that was a result of being hit by a heavy hose stream from a fireboat. So let's talk about our piers. Newport Pier is 970 feet long. We do have an unoccupied building at the end of the pier, just like the Seal Beach Pier. It's 4,169 square feet. We have a weight restriction of three tons on the pier, and that's going to be really important as we get farther into this because it limits what we can get out on the pier. The pier construction is also heavy timber construction, but the one major difference from our pier versus a Seal Beach Pier is we have a concrete walkway port on top of the planks that go out along the pier. There is a fire protection system on that pier. The building is sprinklered. We do have stand pipes that are rated for 250 gallons at each location, and those are strategically located throughout the pier. Balboa Pier, 920 feet long. The Ruby's Restaurant, a little bit smaller, it's 1,082 square feet. Once again, we have a weight limitation of three tons, and the construction's the same. Heavy timber construction with a concrete walkway. However, the building at the end, the Ruby's, is not sprinklered. We do have stand pipes, same thing located strategically throughout the pier, 250 gallons per minute capacity from each one of those. And there's a view of what, you probably walked right by those many, many times in the pier, and they probably don't jump out. Yeah, but that's essential for firefighting. That's how we're going to get the initial water on the fire if we have a fire on the pier. You probably walked by this many times, too. Both piers have the fire department connection. This is where you'd actually pull up, and we'd pump these connections to provide water to overcome the, basically domestic water supplies, because it takes a lot of water to put that fire out, and the domestic water's not going to be enough. So we have the ability to augment the system with our pumpers. So the firefighting end of it. Can this fire happen in Newport Beach that we had in Seal Beach? Absolutely. There's a lot of similarities. We have, both have structures at the end of the pier. They're both wooden piers. They're not concrete piers. A lot of the more modern piers are wood. A lot of the wiring, electrical, and the plumbing all runs along the bottom of the pier like all piers do. And we have, you know, it's basically the same layout on the pier with the fire suppression systems on the pier. The downside to any kind of in-place fire protection system on a pier, the sea and the weather and all that kind of stuff, it makes it really unreliable. One of the issues they had at Seal Beach was about an hour into the fire, that built-in fire protection system failed. But they'd actually planned for that, and I'll show you some pictures here that'll explain what they actually did and what's been kind of our plan. As far as equipment, the land side of the firefight is not going to be a problem. Obviously, we have enough resources that we can call in from our own agency and surrounding agencies. That's not going to be a problem. However, the major problem is going to be getting the equipment from the pier parking lot out to the end of the pier, same with our personnel. One of the ways that we've talked about this fire is kind of strategically, the way we would deal with it, is kind of like a horizontal high-rise fire. So we're moving people and equipment and water long distances out to the end of the pier, which takes time, takes personnel. It's not just like your regular structure fire that we'd go to a single-family residence or an apartment building. It takes a lot of bodies to do this. So some of the challenge that Orange County was faced with that we would be, the weight restrictions, we can't obviously drive a fire engine out there. A fire engine's 33,000 pounds. They actually used a utility vehicle. We would try to use our lifeguard vehicles, or some light-duty vehicles that take equipment and hose out there if they're available. It takes time to walk down to the end of the pier and bring your equipment down in the pier. So there's a reflex time that's going to help the fire grow. The time takes to get our equipment down there and get set up. But probably the biggest difficulty for us that was a benefit for Seal Beach was they had direct access to the fireboats from Long Beach and LA Harbor. They're right there. They responded quickly. They were on scene. I actually went up to Long Beach with Chief Williams, and we talked to the lifeguards that staffed some of the boats that responded that fire. Their boats have a 30 knot capacity when they get dispatched. You're talking about 30, 40 minutes for the smaller boats to show up. The larger boats from Long Beach Fire, Fireboat 15 and Fireboat 20 make about 10 knots. So you're talking about an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes before they could actually show up and start getting water on the fire. We do have agreements with them. They would respond if requested, but the time that would take them to get there would make it questionable how effective they would actually be when they arrived. So some of the things we did, too, we wanted to determine how long would it actually take us to lay our own lines out to the end of the pier if we had a failure of the water supply system. So we simulated a structural response to the end of the Balboa Pier. Engine 61 from the Balboa Peninsula arrived with their three-person crew, and they started pulling off our four-inch hose. Four-inch hose weighs about 47 pounds per stick for the 50-foot sections, and about 75 pounds for the 100-foot sticks that are lower in the bed. So they had their work cut out for them. They started pulling the hose off. Three-man crew, the firefighter and the captain are pulling hose. The engineer's getting ready to pump, start pumping the system. They started taking hose all the way out to end the pier, and then we let a second engine company arrive and simulate the arrival of a second engine company to help them get that 1,000 feet of hose out to the end of the pier. And they actually did a really good job. It took them eight minutes and 15 seconds to deploy 1,000 feet of four-inch hose. So with that being said, I mentioned earlier that this type of firefighting would take a lot of land resources, personnel. A first alarm for us for this type of incident would have three engines with nine firefighters, one ladder truck with three firefighters, one medic unit with two firefighters, a chief officer, one fireboat from the Orange County Sheriff's Harbor Department, one lifeguard boat for water rescue. So our initial response would be 15 firefighters, which would be quickly increased to probably at least two alarms. That's what they used in Seal Beach. I would imagine we'd probably go to three alarms just to get some extra resources there and staging if we needed them. The two types of scenarios, actually, there's three types of scenarios we would face. One is an offensive fire attack, which would be attacking the fire inside the building, just like a regular structure fire that we would go to a residence, fighting the fire inside. The other one is the one you see here in the picture that we had at Seal Beach, was extensive defensive fire. Basically, call that a surrounded round, where you stand outside and you dump a lot of water on it to put the fire out. The one that concerns me the most professionally is the fire that is underneath the pier. They don't talk a lot about this. When I walked out there with Chief McClellan from OCFA who ran the fire, the majority of the fire was underneath the pier. They could get to the fire on top of the pier. Wasn't so much of a problem. The fire underneath the pier, you see that fireboat right there with the red arrow, and it's actually trying to put water on the fire underneath. When we walked out on the, out, as we're walking on the pier, you look down, and the planks got narrower and narrower because it charred. It's significant char underneath the pier where you can actually see all the way through the water. So there was a lot of fire underneath the pier. They had a real hard time getting to it, even with the bigger fireboats. When they got there, they had a real hard time accessing that fire. For us, we'd have the same issues because we basically utilize in the same fireboats. And that's what it looks like underneath one of our piers. You can tell there's a lot of reinforcing beams, pipes, so access is going to be difficult. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that makes our piers different from Seal Beach is we have concrete port on top of our piers. They actually had to cut holes in the pier in Seal Beach and drop what we call a cellar nozzle down into the holes like a big sprinkler head to put the fire out. Even that didn't put the entire fire out. They actually had to call in aquatic firefighters from Los Angeles about a day later to kind of come in and mop it up. So it took a long time to actually get all that smoldering fire out underneath the pier. So that fire underneath the pier, to me, is probably the biggest challenge we're going to have. The fireboat resources we currently have in our harbor, we have Harbor 1, which is the Orange County Sheriff. That monitor in the front has a 750-gallon capacity, 750 gallons per minute. That's the same capacity that the other smaller fireboats had at the Seal Beach Fire. They make 30 knots, so they're pretty fast. But we have one here in our harbor, one in Dana Point, and one in Huntington Harbor. So they'd be, the other two boats would be coming from a ways off. They do have another boat that's smaller. They got about 150 to 200 GPM gallon per minute capacity on the end of their monitor there on the front of the boat. That boat was really not designed for firefighting. And when I met with Lieutenant Alsobrook from the Harbor Department after this fire, we had a long conversation about the fireboats and how suited they were for that type of firefight, and we both agreed that our current Harbor Patrol boats are not designed for a large-scale fire attack like we had up at Seal Beach. Those boats are good for boats in a slip or pleasure craft, but a large firefight like that, you really need the larger fireboats like Fireboat 15 and Fireboat 20 from Long Beach Fire Department. So in summary, access issues based on location of the fire. If the fire's under the pier, it's going to be difficult to get to it based on how we can get lines down to it, what's our attack going to be like from the fireboats. Water supply issues are going to be difficult based on how much hose we can get out there and get water on the fire. Logistical issues based on moving tools and personnel out to the end of the pier. And then access to fireboats. This is probably our number-one largest challenge is access to fireboats. Like I said, we have one fireboat in the harbor that we're going to have access to immediately, and that's going to take us 30 to 40 minutes to get those other fireboats to arrive to assist us. Some of the things that we've done since then, we've inspected and repaired the fire protection systems on both piers. We're developing joint training with the Harbor Department. We're planning on implementing that in September. We thought we'd wait till after summer to do that one. And then we're currently working on the updated standardized procedure for pier firefighting if we get a pier, a pier fire, excuse me. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions up here? No. Well, very good. Thank you for updating us. I guess the takeaways are that hopefully we never have a fire, of course, but we're going to be relying on other agencies to quickly get here. The access boats are problematic. But you're working on that. So I appreciate that very much, and it was concerning to see that happen and know that we have two piers that could present some risk. And the concrete, we'd have to bore through the concrete to get underneath the pier, obviously.
Actually, Los Angeles City Fire Department actually had a fire like that a couple years ago, and they had to breach their concrete to get through and cut through the wooden planks underneath, and it took them several hours to get through the concrete and then actually get through, and the planks are real thick, too. That method of fire attack is really time-consuming, and you have to have specialized equipment to get through that concrete. That's the last option, is going through the concrete. We could do it. It just would take us a long time to do it.
Thank you very much. Should we open it up to the public, to questions? Any members of the public? If you have any questions of Deputy Chief Duncan? Seeing none. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements.
All right. Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On a, on a, on an up, I wanted to share that on the 9th of July, I participated in the Pier-to-Pier Swim, an event that's put on by our lifeguard team. It was a wonderful day. As the gun went off, a pot of dolphin actually took us out and around one of the piers, and we left Balboa Pier and swam to Newport Pier. This is an annual event. There were about 200 people or more that participated. For those, water temps are in the, in the 70s now, so delightful. We have an upcoming event, the Don Burns Annual Swim, that will be at Big Corona Beach on the 20th of August. I also wanted to announce that just yesterday, the mayor and I had a meeting with our public safety officials, public works group, and members of the public on issues related to bicycle and pedestrian safety around our schools. This is in the wake of the tragedy that happened to the McCann family recently out off of 15th Street. I would like to report that you will start to see the very first actions out of this endeavor on our next agenda. The city is moving swiftly to improve safety in the Heights area. We are committed to reviewing and turning over every stone to look at ways to improve safety for the children as they walk to and from school. There are a number of initiatives that will be in place before school starts, but please know that the very first item will be before this council next meeting. With that, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Celeste and the entire staff at Oasis. On Saturday, they put on a great program with several hundred people, Jimmy Buffett Tribute Band. We have a tremendous amount of parrot heads among our senior community, including yours truly, and a great time was had by all. It was an absolutely fabulous program. On Thursday, July 28th, as most of you know, I'm leaving the City Council after 10 years, and I'm hosting a community forum at the Newport Coast Community Center with the candidates running to take our job to talk about issues in District 7 and citywide. And I encourage residents from throughout the city to come and meet the candidates and hear their responses to the questions on the issues facing our community. July 28th, 5:30 at the Newport Coast Community Center.
Mr. Saj.
No reports.
Mr. Pieter. Mr. Duffield. Mayor Protem. I'll just mention, too, last evening, the Community Development Department hosted a community discussion on proposed ideas for Mariners Mile. I thought it was, well, it was standing room only at the Seabase, so I commend staff for organizing that and getting the conversation started with the community on the challenges, the opportunities, and the dreams for Mariners Mile. So I look forward to continued staff and community involvement. All right. The next item is matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. Mr. Saj.
Thank you, Mayor. This came up over the holidays with the 4th of July weekend with the penance over Balboa Island on the public streets, so I'd like to bring this forward. I'd like to amend the, the action, though, to substitute the word decorative for patriotic and have a, have a more broad discussion of the issue. Does that sound okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Madam Clerk.
Did you need a motion or doing public comments?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'll move that, that we place on our future agenda.
Okay, let's vote. And public comments on this, please, excuse me. Any comments related to this item that will be placed on the next agenda? Seeing none. Okay. We'll come back. Let's vote.
Councilmember Duffield and Pieter, did you vote? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Now, Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 13. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of those items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay. Mr. Petros. Mr. Curry. Mr. Saj. Mr. Pieter.
Staff's continuing number 11. I have no others.
All right. Mr. Duffield. Mayor Protem. All right. Any public comments on the remaining consent calendar?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to comment on the last item, which is number 13. It's entitled Annual Report on Council Discretionary Grant Funds. And this refers to something that I could not describe as anything other than $6,000 slush funds that are set up for discretionary use by individual council members. I believe the original policy when this was first started, which made more sense than it does now, was that individual council members could recommend giving that money assigned to them to particular causes, but only with ratification or approval by the council as a whole. Over the years, the idea that the council as a whole had to approve those expenditures somehow fell by the wayside, and it became something that individual council members could do completely on their own, which seems fundamentally and to me completely wrong, because under our charter, U.S. council members are elected only to participate in making decisions for the city collectively as a body, and you're not supposed to be given any special powers as individuals. That said, the report this year is an improvement over prior years, in which the report was released before the end of the fiscal year. So in looking at it, you couldn't be sure how much more So in looking at it, you couldn't be sure how much more might be given away in the last month or two of the year. This year, at least, we see the complete accounting. And given that, I would like to thank and recognize Councilman Duffield, Maldoun, and Piotr in alphabetical order, for having the self-restraint to not give away any of the public funds that were entrusted to them, and Councilmen Petros and Saj for giving away less than they could have. I hope that this is a policy eventually that will go away, and it appears that some of the council members are recognizing it's what I think is inappropriateness. Thank you.
Any other comments, please, on the remaining consent calendar? Nope. Seeing none? Come back to council. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, before you move that motion, on item 11, staff is recommending that that be continued.
Okay.
And then on item 8, you have a substitute amendment that would be included in your motion, hopefully.
Okay. All right. We have a motion.
Yes. Move the balance consent calendar, items 1 through 13. With clarification from staff on items 8, continue this by staff on item 11.
Second.
Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2016-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Newport Beach Municipal Code Chapter 5.20, entitled Palm Broker Secondhand Dealers and Junk Dealers. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward. Anyone coming forward? One comment, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hart Warner, and my wife, Anka, and I'd like to address the Honorable Mayor and the City Council and management concerning, which I mentioned the last time briefly, about the encroachment on Grand Canal Balboa Island. We think, from our point of view, it's common sense to keep this encroachment in place and grandfathered. We've moved here in 1984 and enjoyed this small patio ever since, and we'd like to keep enjoying it, as we do the entire city. This is at 119 Grand Canal. We've decided to remodel the house to make it safer, bring it up to code, electrical and other code in compliance, and beautify it, really, for ourselves and for the city. We didn't know there was an encroachment in place at that time, and neither did our architect and neither did our builder at that time. And our architect is a Newport Beach architect. So in a way, we would feel a little bit singled out if we'd have to pull back there. I don't know whether you've all seen the picture by the harbor master, harbor manager, Chris Miller. All the homes along 100 blocks of Grand Canal are in one line. In fact, ours would kind of stick out, be a jacket line, if we were the only ones to pull back by three feet. And plus, be additional city expense to remove or move lamp posts and other things, which would be in the way of a walkway. So anyway, we feel it should remain as it is. We've been there since 1984. We moved in in 1984. We love it here, and we'd like to keep our little patio. We think it's common sense to keep it as it is and keep the grandfather, maybe the entire 100 block of Grand Canal. That's my motion. I don't know whether that's a good motion or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
Madam Mayor and City Council, this item is on your next agenda on August 9th.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments, public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward. No? All right. Oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last night, we had a well-attended aviation committee meeting that dealt with items such as the impending FAA Next Gen project for aligning departures from John Wayne Airfield, heights on departures from the airfield today, and the progress on the health study that is -- oh, I'm timed out. And the progress on the health study that we're working on in partnership with UCI. It was a very well-attended meeting. I think one of the takeaways was that those who are affected by the airfield are strongly encouraged to reach out to their elected officials in Washington and up in Santa Ana at the Board of Supervisors. We are doing what we can, but your voice in Santa Ana and in Washington is needed. Thank you.
Mr. Curry. Mr. Saj.
Thank you, Mayor. Our local coastal plan implementation plan has finally been scheduled. It's the good news, it's on the August Coastal Commission hearing. The bad news is they're probably going to continue it, correct, to September?
We are still waiting for a staff report.
So anyway, either August or September, but we're on the agenda for August.
All right. Mr. Piotr. Mr. Duffield. Mayor Protem. Okay, we'll move into public hearings. First item, number 14, the residences at Newport Place. This is an appeal from the Planning Commission, by the applicant after the Planning Commission. Go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. Good evening, council members. I'm Kim Brant, your Community Development Director. This is an appeal of a decision by the Planning Commission for a project located in the airport area. The applicant or the applicant is here this evening, and they do have a presentation. So I thought I would defer to them to make their presentation to the city council, and then staff is available to answer any questions and offer the council the options they have in terms of reviewing this appeal.
All right. Very good. May the applicant please come forward.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Brittany Jensen. I'm the development manager representing Newport Place Residential. We are the development team heading up the residences at Newport Place. Before addressing our appeal, I'd like to clarify some statements in the staff report that may convey a misleading impression. With respect to the waiver of the park dedication, a half-acre open space is being provided within the project that was denied by the Planning Commission. The only issue is to who owns the land and maintains it, the city or the applicant. With respect to the amount of commercial space being proposed, neither the general plan nor the zoning code require any retail space be included within the project, and the applicant is voluntarily providing this. The parking should not be an issue, as the project denied by the Planning Commission provides more than the required parking ratio approved by staff. I'd like to also provide additional information regarding the changes proposed that are listed within the staff report. The increase of onsite additional retail square footage would occur as a result of the reduction in residential units if it is required that the half-acre park be dedicated to the city. Similarly, an increase in the number of parking spaces would only occur if the city requires the park dedication. The number of parking spaces would remain the same as originally proposed, with 715 spaces, but the requirement for the parking would be reduced and provide a higher parking ratio per residential unit. I'd like to now give you an abbreviated presentation, if I can, there we go, of what was originally, what is being appealed and what was originally acted upon by the Planning Commission. Here you can see, we have a 5.691 acre site that currently houses the MacArthur Square Shopping Center. We're proposing a mixed-use development with four levels of apartments, over a level and a half of subterranean parking, which includes 715 parking spaces, and 5,677 square feet of ground-floor retail space. The project would incorporate 384 apartment units, including 86 units that are affordable to low-income households. We have a wide variety of unit mixes, including 54 studio units, 173 one-bedroom, 136 two-bedroom, and 21 three-bedroom units. Our site is very unique in that it provides the opportunity for the overall coverage of 55% landscaping and open space, as opposed to only 45% of the building footprint. Here we have the site plan. You can see that the site has been structured into four main buildings that break down the overall massing and provide view corridors running north, south, and east-west, and open courtyards on the podium level. Below the podium, on the ground floor, there's direct street access to the parking garage, the retail component, and residential units, walk-up units, providing pedestrian access to the surrounding public sidewalk. Below the ground level is the subterranean parking level of the garage that includes parking and storage for residential use only. And I'd like to quickly share some architectural renderings of the project. This is the corner of the project at Dove and Westerly Place. It includes the garage entry accessible to visitors and residents. Here we show the corner of Dove and Scott, which incorporates the retail component, the frontage along Scott Drive, which introduces another garage entry for visitor and residential use, the corner of Corinthian Way and Scott Drive, the corner of Martingale Way and Corinthian Way, the frontage, including the residential-only garage entry on Martingale Way, and lastly, the Martingale Way cul-de-sac, which includes the open space being provided. As you, I'm sorry. With respect to the building heights and setbacks originally proposed for the project, as you can see from this illustration, the overall building heights range from 49 feet, or I'm sorry, 46 feet to 79 feet, with the tallest elements housing stairwells, elevator shafts, and mechanical equipment. This rendering illustrates the visual effect of the varying roof heights that are being proposed. As for the building setbacks, this table provides a comparison between the planned community guidelines, the proposed setbacks, the total setback from the street, including the 10-foot existing city right-of-way, and the total deviation from the planned community Another variance that is included within the application pertains to the provision of a half-acre open space in addition to the payment of an in-lu park fee versus the dedication of a half-acre public park with no payment of an in-lu fee. The requirement for the half-acre public park is dictated per Land Use Element 61513, which requires the dedication and improvement of at least 8% of the gross land area or one-half acre, whichever is larger, as a neighborhood park. Per the city's recreational element, a neighborhood park is generally 1 to 8 acres in size and contain a wide variety of improvements, which can include turf areas, active sports fields and courts, community buildings, play apparatus, and picnic facilities. What's being proposed in the original Planning Commission, I'm sorry, what was originally proposed to the Planning Commission included the in-lu fee payment plus the provision of a half-acre of publicly accessible open space. For security and safety reasons, the applicant is requesting to be able to close this space at night. We have a few illustrations of the open space being provided along the Sutherley property line of the project. As presented in the staff report, there are potential modifications to remove the building setback and height variances from the application and make the half-acre park city-owned.
Wait, were you going to show us the park?
It was this location here. That is the open space being provided. It's located--
Parking lot.
I can actually go back to the site plan, which--
That's fine.
We have prepared visuals to demonstrate the difference between the originally proposed project and the revisions the project would incorporate to remove the building setback and height variances. I'd like to first, once again, show the currently proposed site plan, then the revised site plan, without the setback variances, as a comparison. Here you see the originally proposed site plan with the open space provided at the Sutherley property line. The building is set back 59 feet from the property line to include that open space. This visual provides the contrast of the project abiding by the 30-foot setback, again, still including the 59-foot setback for the open space along the Sutherley property line. The elevations are also going to show the comparison between the currently proposed building height versus the modified to allow a comparison along each street. Here we have the conceptual site elevation for the park and pedestrian promenade area located at the Sutherley property line with the modified building height demonstrated per this elevation. The conceptual site elevation along Martingale Way with the potential modified building height shown here. The conceptual site elevation along Corinthian Way with the modified building height shown here. Scott Drive, as currently proposed, with the modified building height shown here. And lastly, Dove Street, as currently proposed, with the modified building height demonstrated. I'd like to briefly address the history of the development agreement discussion before turning it over to our legal counsel, Richard Zilinga. Over two years ago, when work commenced on this project, we were assured by city staff that no development agreement was required for the project. With this being the case, we were committed to moving forward with a more expensive podium design for the project. Staff has continued their support of the original determination that no development agreement is required per the applicable general plan policies and municipal code sections.
My name is Richard Zilinga. I'm with the law firm of Stowell, Zilinga, Ruth Vaughn, and Triger. I've given the address for our offices in Westlake Village to the city clerk on a yellow card, and we represent the applicant, Newport Place Residential, LLC. You should have received sometime late last week by Federal Express, a letter from our firm responding to an opposition letter from Shopoff, an opposition to this appeal. And the letter responded to the points in the Shopoff letter. It also presented three options that you can have before you tonight, which pretty much track what the staff report is telling you. And those options are, one, that you grant the appeal as presented to you tonight, which would involve approving the project denied by the Planning Commission, and that is the project that the staff recommended for approval to the Planning Commission, and that's the project that is a result of the two-year process with staff. The staff report says if you do so, you could do that at a continued hearing on August 19th, so that the staff would have the time to prepare an appropriate resolution of approval. The second option for you tonight would be to continue, and by the way, the first option is the one we prefer, obviously. The second option would be to continue this hearing, according to staff, until September 27th, 2016, to give you an opportunity to provide your input tonight on whatever your preferences might be, based on what Brittany just presented to you in terms of setbacks, building heights, and the issue of who's going to own and maintain the park, the city or the applicant. And if you wanted to give that direction, then you would retain jurisdiction of this appeal, and you would address it in September after giving your input to staff tonight. We think that that's the inferior option, number two is the inferior option, because the project you wind up with doesn't have all the benefits that were described earlier by Brittany Jensen, specifically the more-- specifically the more interesting architecture with the height elevations and the amenities and setbacks. The third option, which is the one kind of discussed in the staff report and recommended by staff, is that you refer or remand this project back to the planning commission. But we would say if you're inclined to do that, it's critical that you do so with some guidance on a couple of policy issues. So that the referral back to the planning commission doesn't just become an endless negative loop of denials and appeals because they don't have the answer to two critical policy questions. And those are: the position on the development agreement. You know, is the council of the view that one is or is not required? And obviously, our position is that it's not required. And that's the position of your staff and your city attorney's office. And then also the issue of the ownership of the park. Should it be owned and maintained by the city or be owned and maintained by the applicant? And you say, well, why with guidance? Why do we need to give that guidance to the planning commission as opposed to just sending it back? Well, the first reason is because the chairman of the planning commission asked for such guidance. He specifically said in the hearing to staff, "Have you canvassed the council on whether they think a development agreement is required or not?" And the answer was, "No, we haven't canvassed the council. We're going by what the statute says." And staff concluded no development agreement was required, as did the city attorney's office. But the planning commission was looking for some direction from the council on that issue. The second reason for providing guidance is that despite the staff report not mentioning at all this issue of the development agreement, and despite the denial resolution by the planning commission, never referring to that, the minutes that we've lodged with the council and also the hearing transcripts themselves show that it was really, it looks to me like, the primary motivating factor for denial of the project because there were repeated statements, even after staff explained no development agreement is required, where the planning commissioners would say, "Well, we think a development agreement is required. And what does the council have to say about this?" And so clearly, it was the hang-up, we think, that caused the planning commission to deny the project. So why is the planning commission, in our view, disregarding the advice of staff and the advice of the city attorney's office with respect to this issue of the development agreement? It seems like a strange thing because it's a legal question. We can't read their minds, obviously. But we suspect there are two reasons why that might be occurring. The first reason is the planning commission is probably believes that the city is somehow losing $12 million without a development agreement and public benefit fees, even though you can't lose something that you're not legally entitled to. And the second reason we believe is that a competitor of the project, also an apartment builder, Shopoff, claims it's unfair that they have to do a development agreement, and this project does not. Now, the Shopoff argument assumes that the two projects are essentially the same, and therefore, apples to apples. If one has to do a development agreement, so should this project. That's the assumption of their argument. Why don't we take a look at the next slide? This is a comparison of the development agreement triggers that would trigger a development agreement. It compares our project in the first column, the residences at Newport Place, and then it compares the Shopoff project, the Uptown Newport project, in the last column on the right. And if you just go through that list of triggers, the first one is the general plan. Those sections of the general plan, which will come up in a second on the slide, indicate that if you do additive units, not replacement units, but new infill additive units, it triggers a development agreement, in particular, in the area where the Uptown project, Uptown Newport project, is located, which is unlike this project. And then if you look at the municipal code section, the Uptown project required a general plan amendment. That's a legislative act. A zoning code amendment, that's a legislative act. And it also required this council to overrule the denial of the Uptown Newport project by the Airport Land Use Commission. All of those were legislative acts that triggered the requirement for a development agreement. None of those apply with respect to our project. You see no, no, no next to those. And then just in terms of size, where it says other distinctions regarding size, the Uptown Newport project required a subdivision map. It required a traffic study, and they want it. They ask for vested rights, which you only get through a development agreement, in this particular case. We didn't ask for any vested rights, nor do we need a traffic study or a subdivision map. So completely apples-to-oranges comparison between the two projects. In addition, staff repeatedly explained that the residences project, the project before you tonight, is not, not in the same general plan geographic area, the conceptual development plan area requiring a development agreement as is the Shopoff Uptown Newport project. If we look at the next slide. Now, these colors aren't that easy to see, but the green area that you see with a green line around it, it looks somewhat like a triangle to the side, contains the Uptown Shopoff project. That's number eight up on the screen. And this area is the area that's called the conceptual development plan area. Our project tonight is not in that area. Our project tonight is kind of in that salmon-colored area on the other side of, I believe it's MacArthur. And it's number 12, in that pink salmon-colored area, whereas the Shopoff project is in the green area, and it's number eight. Why does that matter? Well, the key language is the conceptual development plan area. That's the name of that green area with the green around it. And why is that important? Let's look at the next slide. This is from your general plan, LU 6.15.5, entitled Residential and Supporting Uses. I've highlighted the key relevant text. It says, "However, a maximum of 550 units may be developed as infill on surface parking lots or areas not used as occupiable buildings on properties within the conceptual development plan area depicted on figure LU 22." That's what we just looked at. "Provided the parking is replaced on-site." So there's that language, conceptual development plan area, and it's talking about infill or additive units as your staff likes to discuss them. The project you have before us tonight, it's not a big parking lot with no buildings on it. It's occupied. And it's not in that area, conceptual development plan area, and it's not doing any infill or additive units. It's doing replacement units of existing retail, commercial-type uses. The next slide has the key language that shows you the difference between our project and the Uptown project. The highlighted language, and this is the implementation section of the general plan, the highlighted language in Section 13.1 says, "Development agreements shall be required for housing developed as additive infill on surface parking lots in the airport area." So if you put all of those together, and I understand why the planning commission could be confused about this because you've got to read all these sections together to understand it. That's what your staff has done. That's what your city attorney's office has done and concluded that, yes, a development agreement was required and triggered for the Uptown Newport project, but it is not for this project because of the geography and because of the nature of this project with no legislative action. Now, is this just kind of a legal, technical argument for why a development agreement is not required for us, but one is required for the Uptown Newport project? It's not. There are two fundamental fairness reasons for why a development agreement is not appropriate for this project as opposed to Uptown Newport. The first one is the one that Brittany Jensen told you about earlier, when she said, "For two years, staff told us no development agreement was required, and they made choices and investments to spend money on a much more expensive project based upon that assurance that they reasonably relied upon." The second reason is that this project before you tonight has 30% affordable housing, which is what your general plan and statutes require for this project. The Uptown Newport project only has 15%, half as much affordable housing. So this project, based upon what your general plan and zoning say you want, is providing a much greater public benefit. And that needs to be considered just on a fairness level with respect to the demand for a development agreement. So let's briefly go back to your options tonight, which I think is the most important thing. First, we urge you not to remand this project back to the planning commission because the planning commission has already revealed its view about the project by denying a continuance on a 3-2 vote. The applicant said, "We are willing to redesign the project. If that's what you really want, we don't like it, but we'll redesign it to not have the setback variation, to not have the building height variation, and to dedicate the public park if you give us a continuance." Just like the planning commission does all the time and did recently for 150 Newport Center Drive. The planning commission turned us down. We think that's because we said, "But we won't give on the development agreement issue." And I believe that was the heart of the denial. The second point is, if you do remand this matter, as I said before, please, 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 give some direction or guidance to the planning commission on those two open issues. The development agreement issue that staff has said it's not required, and on the issue of the half-acre park, which staff was happy with us paying the in-lu fee and providing that open space. You kind of get your cake and eat it too. You get a $1,250,000 in-lu fee, plus you get this half-acre of open space that's open to the public. We just would like to close it off at night for security reasons. I'd like to close with a slide showing a quote from one of the commissioners, which I think is very revealing for you. This is a quote from Commissioner Lawler that was made in the final hearing to deny the project. And he says, "And to add on, not speaking for the commission, but there was a general sense that if the applicant had a development agreement, and if the half-acre open space was indeed public open space, I think at least myself and more of the commission might have had more willingness to look at the height and other various setbacks and other requests that the applicant made." Close quotes. There's no issue with respect to the open space because we're willing to do that. We're willing to make it accessible. There's a permanent perpetual easement that makes it open to the public, except we'd like to have it closed at night and gate it off. But the development agreement appears to be what the hang-up was for the planning commission. I read that, and it looks to me like they kind of like the idea of maybe having some of this building height variation and having some of these variations in setback, but the development agreement was the hang-up. So if, we of course would like you to keep the project, approve the project as proposed, continue the hearing so your staff has an opportunity to prepare the resolution for you. That's number one. Number two, if that's not, if you're not inclined to do that, then please keep the project, but give the staff some direction on how you feel about the building height and the setbacks and the park, owned by the city or not. And if that's not the case, if you're going to send it back to the planning commission, as suggested by staff, please give some guidance on those two issues, development agreement and the park ownership. Thank you very much for your time.
Sir, I'm wondering if you would share with me that parenthetical in the very beginning here, "Not speaking for the commission as a whole." Was that what it said? "Not speaking for the commission." You're trying to make the case that, in fact, he is speaking for the commission, when in fact, he says, "Not speaking for the commission."
First of all, two things. If you look at, and we've provided the transcript of the hearing, there are comments from not only Commissioner Lawler, but also the chairman of the commission, Kramer, and one other commissioner, clearly indicating that they wanted a development agreement, even though staff said it wasn't required. So this comment, and he goes on to say in this quote, "And I think at least myself and more of the commission might have had more willingness to look at the height and other various setbacks," suggests that he was of the view. He could be wrong. But he was of the view that not just him, but the other commissioners also would have been receptive to the height and setback issues if there had been a development agreement. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Staff, did you have any more comment before we come up here? Did you want to add on anything more?
Just a couple of clarifications. I do want to clarify that if the city council wishes to refer this back to the planning commission, it would be just for recommendation. It wouldn't be for an action other than a recommendation to come back to city council. This is an appeal, so you would be sending the project back to the planning commission for their review and recommendations back to you, the city council. So there would not be an endless loop of denial and appeal. So I did want to clarify that. I also want to clarify that the staff has not seen the information that was shared this evening regarding the revised elevations and the site plans in regards to the height and to the setback. So we have not had the opportunity to review that. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but I can also outline the options that are available to you this evening after your discussion, if you wish.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it up to council. Any more, okay, any more public comments? Please come forward.
Good evening. Bill Shopoff, Honorable Mayor Dixon, and fellow council members. I find myself here having kind of a very unusual position tonight. I've been in the development business for some 30, 35 years, and I've never found myself in this position of opposing a project. And I want to be clear about that because this is not about lack of, you know, competition's a great thing. We've seen some 2,500 units approved in Irvine within a closer area than this to our project. It's about equity. And I want to bring a couple of things forward on it. And there are things that, although we have a great relationship with your staff and we tend to see things similarly many times, we find ourselves tonight maybe on a few differences. One, I want to raise a couple of items. We've raised some of them in our letter, but I want to raise a few more or at least add some detail. With regards to the park, there's a couple of things. The applicant, in my mind, is looking to have their cake and eat it too. They're counting the park within their setback, and that's not a setback. The setback should be from the park. But I'm going to refer you to the general plan, page 3-108. It's the Land Use Standards 6.1513. It talks about this half-acre park, but that talks about in a phased development. And if you go to the second paragraph of that standards, it says, "In every case, the neighborhood parks shall be neighborhood parks shall be at least 8% of the total residential area, or one acre, whichever is greater." So it's not a half-acre. Half-acre is if there's a phased project. In this case, your general plan requires a one-acre park. Then it also talks about minimum dimensions of 150 feet. So that's minimum both directions of 150 feet. That's not what this applicant is proposing. All we're asking for is that standards be similar or, you know, roughly equal. I'm going to leave the development agreement to wiser minds than ours. We read it differently. We're going to respectfully disagree, but you've got a bunch of smart people here. You guys will sort that out. We look at parking. It seems to be substandard park to us. As I said, the park, and the park is not just, is the city getting a park to house people, but it also impacts the maximum number of units. Because that one acre or a half-acre, if you can somehow see clear to that, I'm not sure how you get there, but the one acre reduces the project size by 50 units, times the 1.35 density bonus that they're utilizing. To talk about the unfairness or lack of equity that they have to have a 30% affordable, the 30% affordable is only if there is a project less than 10 acres within the airport area. So if they could compile a project of 10 acres, they could get out of that 30% affordable. So I think that there are things. I guess I'll call it good there, and if you've got any questions, we're happy to answer them, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Dorothy Kraus, and I'm the vice president of SPON, still protecting our Newport. And tonight I am speaking on behalf of SPON. SPON believes that the airport area is an important part of our community, and that the character of this area needs to be carefully defined. The impact of interspersing residential within commercial zones should be understood prior to approving new projects. As it is, projects are being proposed on a piecemeal basis, starting with Uptown Newport and now the residences. The 2006 voter-approved general plans says this about the airport area, that housing and supporting services be developed as clusters of residential villages centering on neighborhood parks and interconnected pedestrian walkways. There would be ground-level convenience, retail uses, and it would be developed as a sufficient scale to achieve a complete neighborhood. Yet the airport area has no cohesive plan, calling for nearby amenities for residents, such as a grocery store. Any complete neighborhood concept presumes a mixed-use development that should include neighborhood parks, green space, and pedestrian ways that are not parking lots, 30-foot setbacks from the curb, retail amenities and community amenities, to sustain a work-live environment, which would ultimately reduce traffic. The airport area could also use a streetscape plan, like the one that's been developed for West Newport Mesa, to promote a good feeling of neighborhood ambiance. And a cohesive plan would allow for properly planned use of public benefit funds to benefit the area. SPON believes that the next step, and the only next step, before taking action on this project, or any other projects near the airport, is that a specific area plan or a comprehensive plan for the airport area be developed, engaging stakeholders in the discussion and planning process. Otherwise, piecemeal development is perpetuated with each project being taken up individually, with some subject to green light, and some potentially subjected to lawsuits and even referendum. So in closing, I want to thank you for your time and consideration of our comments and concerns, and allowing us to voice this opportunity to reset the piecemeal planning course that the airport area is currently on, and embark upon a specific area plan or comprehensive plan for this Newport Beach community. Thanks again, and have a good night.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First comment I wanted to make is to emphasize to you that this is a discretionary application. You have no obligation to grant this development application unless you feel that it's right for Newport Beach. And it was a discretionary application when it was, and that means you have actually an option for, which Mr. Zeilinga did not mention, which is simply to deny this project outright, not remand it to anybody, which leaves the applicant free to come back with a project that is right for Newport Beach. They can reapply if they wish. He was correct that if this was remanded to the planning commission, that they would like guidance on the development issue, development agreement issue, and on the park ownership issue. However, he gave you a completely distorted picture of what the planning commission's reason for denial was. I was at those hearings, and I believe, and I have the impression from those hearings, the reason was that on March 3, the planning commission held a study session about this project. They heard what it was going to be. They had many concerns about it, its compliance with the general plan, why it needed all these variations. Their reading of the general plan is that the citizens of Newport Beach were looking forward to the development in the airport area of open outward-facing communities, which this did not seem to be, that would be interconnected by public parks and promenades. They were extremely concerned that the open space so-called by the applicant might be open space for the residents of their project, but it was not open, public open space in any way, shape, or form. And so when this came back to them on June 9, they were extremely disappointed that the applicant had made absolutely no changes, zero changes, to the project that had been presented to them at the study session in March. The planning commissioners were rightfully insulted by the lack of response to their input, and not willing to grant a continuance to the applicant because they saw no reason to think that the applicant would respond to their request for change at a future hearing. They thought it was absolutely pointless. So I think that's a more accurate picture than Mr. Zeilinga gave to you, and I think since they have come to this meeting with the idea that they have in their minds some changes, and have not told even the city staff what those changes might be, certainly you can't go ahead and approve those. And I think you have the same experience the planning commission had, and the proper response, just say no, come back with a formal application, start the process over again with something right for Newport Beach, something right for our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Lori Tradier, and I did also go to the last hearing for this project that was heard by the planning commission. And I would just like to say that I reviewed the SEQA document for this project, and I didn't feel that it met the requirements of SEQA. I didn't feel that it fully disclosed impacts related to the thresholds of significance that were in the city's initial study form, and didn't feel that it supported the findings that the planning commission and city council would have to make to approve this project. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Rick Rochan. I'm a part-owner of the parcel right across the street from them, at 4299 MacArthur Boulevard in Newport Beach. And I spoke at the planning session and at the meeting back in June, and my big issue was the parking. I'm an owner-operator of a lot of apartments all over Orange County, and if I could redesign any of them, I would, first thing I would do is add more parking. You need more parking. And from what I see, for almost 400 units, he was only going to have 644 dedicated to residents, and that's for residents and guests, and that's just simply not adequate for a project this big, where you have studios, one-bedroom apartments, two-bedrooms, and three-bedroom apartments. You know, you can't discriminate about how many people, if they're adults or children in there, and anyone over 16 probably has a vehicle. So you're going to have, you know, 800 to maybe 1,000 people living there, and, you know, wholly inadequate parking. The surrounding streets, with the exception of Martingale, all the surrounding streets, there's no parking on that. And how it would impact me is that I have parking in all the surrounding property office buildings around there, and the hotel, they have, you know, big parking lots there. You know, as an owner, you know, I don't want, you know, I don't want a nuisance and a burden placed upon me to police that parking, because, you know, they're going to come home at night and not have parking, and they're going to see those open spaces come there, and, you know, it's just going to increase my liability and all the surrounding property owners. You know, this is, as an operator of multifamily apartments, it's, they're setting up this project to fail, and you don't want a parking situation like you have down on the peninsula, where it's just a nightmare. And this is what you'd set up in approving a project like this without adequate parking. They could easily add another couple of layers, you know, if they wanted to, you know, build this many units, or they could scale the project back and not build so many units. But, you know, they have to provide parking. Newport Beach, they require 2.5 spaces for every, anything over four units, and I, you know, they should, they should be asked to provide that type of parking, so the project can be successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I was going to ask you if you wanted to respond, so.
So much.
Please do.
Not to everything, just a couple of them. I'm sure you'll be glad to hear that. On Mr. Shopoff's comments, just to start, he indicates that the general plan requires one acre, not a half acre, and we haven't complied. The general plan recognizes that with respect to this area, a concession can be provided if you're not consistent with the requirement in the general plan, and that's what we're asking for. It's one of the three concessions we're asking for because of the affordable housing component of the project. So one of the concessions is setbacks, one is building height, and one is with respect to the half-acre park area, and he doesn't mention that we're proposing a $1.25 million in lieu fee in addition to providing that half acre. So that's pretty good for the city. He says, "You really shouldn't feel sympathy for us on the 30% affordable component, because that only is triggered by the fact that the property here is less than 10 acres." And if you have 10 acres, then you don't have to do the 30% affordable, and with respect to this area. Well, the problem is, there aren't any 10-acre parcels under single ownership in this area, which is why anybody coming in in this area to develop is going to have to provide 30% affordable, which in most projects would kill it, frankly. In this particular project, the applicant has owned the land for so long, from the early 1970s, that he's able to do it and make it work economically, even though the site is only 5.6 acres. On Mr. Jim Mosher's comment, he says that the reason for the denial by the planning commission was that there was a study session, some planning commissioners made comments, and the applicant didn't respond to those comments or change the project, and therefore the planning commission was disappointed or irritated, and therefore denied a continuance, I guess is the theory. The problem with that is it's not really fair. At a study session, informal study session, you get scattered comments. I mean, one planning commissioner will say, as was the case here, "I want a grocery store there." Another planning commissioner will have a different idea, and they're not necessarily consistent. And so you take into consideration what's being said, you work with staff, and you come back, and there were some modifications, for example, on public access to the half-acre park. We changed that to make it so that there was access during the daytime for the public with a perpetual easement, as opposed to excluding the people from that based upon the fact that we're paying an in-lufy, a park fee. So it wasn't a complete, you know, we're not going to do what you say, but we felt really good about the setback in the building height. Staff had recommended that for approval, and that's why those items weren't changed. And also, I would just note, as I mentioned earlier, that it has been the practice of the planning commission to grant continuances, even when there was a study session, and the applicant comes before them, and if there are additional changes they want, or more changes they want, and the applicant says, "Would you give me a continuance, and I'll work on those?" They do so. They just did it for 150 Newport Center Drive. They didn't do it here. And that's it. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it up to council. Mr. Saldich.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, SPON, in their testimony tonight, got it wrong. We've done planning out in the airport area, the area that's called the conceptual plan area. We went through a major planning effort, that area, to provide all of the things that we asked for in the general plan, parks and open space, facilities and services for the residents, and we came up with a comprehensive plan there that covered a number of properties. So they're wrong on that. However, this is, in my opinion, a terrible project. I think the park is a joke. It's nothing more than a setback area between the parking lot and the buildings. Certainly, you take a look at the conceptual plan for the concept plan area, and you can see that we had park areas there that provided usable open space and amenities for the residences. This project is too dense for the surrounding area. It sits by itself. It's just too massive, too bulky. The applicant's so-called redesign, God, if you looked at it, it looks like they took the top two floors and ran an eraser across it. No architectural consideration to it whatsoever. I couldn't even believe they showed that one. So it's my inclination to uphold the planning commission's findings on this. Their findings are clear and concise. Their findings make no recommendation to a development agreement. It's certainly not part of anything that I'm thinking of. I'm just taking a look at this project. I don't think it has anything in the way of redeeming values that can be salvaged out of it, and just needs to go back and start over completely from scratch. So with that, I would move to uphold the planning commission to deny the project.
Any other comments? Should we call the vote?
Just briefly, we don't have any of the resolutions in the packet this evening, so we'd recommend that you bring it back on August 9 to adopt those resolutions.
We have the planning commission resolution. Why can't we just use that? It's got all the findings in it. I've gone through those findings. I mean, that's what I based my motion on. I went through and read every one of them.
I think it'd be a brief issue to deal with it on August 9. Typically, we prepare a resolution specifically for the council to adopt. It's not in the packet this evening, so.
Come on, take a look, take a look at it. All you got to do is change planning commission to city council. We're adopting the same resolution. I want to push back on this, Aaron. You should have had a resolution prepared anyway for this hearing.
All right. So it'd be a resolution that basically adopts all the planning commission's findings with the notations, that the city council heard the appeal hearing this evening, and that would be the resolution that'll be drafted and executed.
Correct.
All right. And we have a second. Let's call for the vote. Repeat the motion again.
Can I ask one clarifying question? The planning commission basically didn't deny it with prejudice so that they could bring back a project within a year. Is that still the position of the council?
No, that's fine. If they want to go back and redesign, fine. It's just a terrible project.
Okay. Could you just restate what the vote, what the motion is?
The motion is to deny the project and uphold the decision of the planning commission with all of the findings and recommendations in the planning commission resolution.
And we'll prepare a resolution to reflect that, that also notes that the hearing was held this evening, and so there will actually be a resolution that does that.
Okay.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
The next item, item number 15, is Lido House Hotel floor area expansion. Staff, if you'd like to make a comment, please.
Mayor and members of the city council, this is an amendment to the general plan, coastal land use plan, and zoning code, an amendment to the previously authorized site development review and conditional use permit for the Lido House Hotel. As you recall, approximately two years ago, the city approved Lido's House Hotel and these amendments I mentioned. The general plan was amended to allow for the construction of a little over 98,000 square feet. Project was approved, went to the coastal commission, and was approved. And through the design process, the applicant is looking and seeking additional square footage in order to accommodate more spaces inside the hotel, the lobby, the restaurant, the spa, and closing some pre-function space. And the amount that they're seeking tonight is 44,745 square feet. The way that this project is set up, obviously, we've got very specific general plan and coastal land use plan zoning entitlements for the numbers. We need to go back and amend all the planning documents in order to make this happen. And we had a public hearing with the planning commission back in June, and they did review the project in depth and did recommend approval of the project. So before you tonight, we'll hold a public hearing. Again, if the recommended actions are taken, the general plan, coastal land use plan, zoning code would be amended to simply increase the allowable maximum, an additional 4,745 square feet, about 4.8% of the project. And then the conditional use permit and the site development review would allow for the additional construction. Since staff's available for any questions the commission may have, and the applicant is here to present as well.
All right. Thank you. Council, any questions before we go to the public? Seeing none, members of the public, please come forward.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tony Rozek, and I'm the vice president of planning for Ardeoson Development. We truly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding our request for additional floor area for Lido House Hotel. The proposed plan presented to you this evening is primarily intended to create back-of-house areas that would support and complement Lido House Hotel's Four Diamond experience. Furthermore, additional managerial positions are being integrated within the hotel's operation and resulting in additional office area. Other areas, through design evolution, were adjusted to be more proportional and relative to one another, or revised to meet today's intent of the building code. With these refinements and improvements of our interior design, in addition to the minimal impact to the exterior architecture, we believe that a superior product and service will be offered to our hotel guests and visitors. Thus, Ardeoson Development is respectfully requesting for the approval of the proposed additional floor area. Our architect Greg Viegas, our land use attorney Sherman Stacy, and I will be available and happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I know many of you are closely wedded to the success of this project, and I too hope that it's successful, but I think it's clear from national politics that trust is one of the most difficult things for government and government officials to obtain and maintain. Speaking the truth breeds trust, and in this agenda item, we have a remarkable display of truthfulness. For if the city staff simply let the developer build the hotel a few feet larger than is shown in the approved plans, I really don't think anyone other than the plan checkers would ever have known that they did that. But it is. But it is possible to be untruthful simply by choosing not to say something that a reasonable person would bring to the attention of decision-makers, and in that, this item is an unfortunate example of a problem that is chipping away at trust in Newport Beach city government. The trust issue is this: In the year 2000, Newport Beach voters overwhelmingly adopted the green light charter amendment, and they presumably trusted that whenever the need for a vote comes up, the government apparatus would let us know. And for a while, it seems that they did. But starting five, maybe 10 years ago, a new ethos seems to have descended on our city with the staff helping developers find ways to work around green light, debating internally whether a particular scheme might be legal, but then presenting it to the decision-makers without the slightest hint that there might be a contrary viewpoint. So we have the spectacle of tennis courts being unhesitatingly converted, without counting them, into hotel rooms, without the decision-makers being reminded that the staff had previously concluded that they should count. And we have hotel rooms being converted into uncounted residences without a reminder that a previous council and a previous city attorney emphatically concluded that new residences do count towards green light. Here we have a spectacle of a hotel earlier approved at what staff previously concluded with questionable reasoning, but without pointing out that there could be any question about it, at what they thought was the absolute maximum square footage possible without a vote. And now you're being asked at 20 percent to what we were previously told was the maximum, and nowhere is the council told that they need to consider if that is really what voters intended, the 20 percent in green light to be used for. And to me, that's a deception by silence. But the much larger deception is that you're not being reminded that there are serious questions that have been raised about whether the originally approved amount, that maximum, was itself compliant with green light. When you don't hear that from your staff, and instead you have to find the letter from me, a skeptical member of the public, buried on page 132 of the staff report, I think you can be pretty sure that trust in government is being eroded. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you just want to comment on the green light implications? Please.
Certainly. As you recall, there was a general plan amendment several years before the hotel, and we did increase the general plan through that amendment, approximately 24,000 square feet. And the reference that Mr. Mosher is making to is the baseline for the purpose of that analysis. And what was used and disclosed at that time was 75,000 square foot was the entitlement number for the hotel. And Mr. Mosher is pointing, is bringing that issue to the City Council here today. But, you know, again, there was a decision that was made, you know, several years ago, and we feel it was fully consistent with the intent of the general plan. And in this case, here, we're using the, that prior amendment, 20 percent of that prior amendment now is available for a future amendment. And so this amendment does take it back right up to the limit and is using the 20 percent for a subsequent amendment. I don't think anyone envisioned it would be the same project coming back for a second amendment, but in this case, it is, and it's totally consistent with the charter.
I just think it's important to note, too, that original staff report went into detail about the green light analysis. It was fully disclosed to the public, and no one was hiding the ball about how it was being considered. And the action tonight would be fully appropriate and in line with the charter.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Your question.
Sherman Stacy, I'm the attorney for R.D. Olson Development. Your staff has responded to the things that I would have responded to, and I won't add to that, except there are other comments in Mr. Mosher's letter about somehow Measure B taking the square footage from the current City Hall site and transferring it to the current City Hall. I've read Measure B over, and I can't find anything in Measure B other than approving the current City Hall, leaving then the city with a piece of property that it had to decide how to reuse. And you went through a long, extensive process on that reuse in which the city let developers know what size of project would be acceptable on the site. There was a public competition before the even processing of an actual application where developers came with proposals, and the council reviewed them, and the community reviewed them. There were probably, at least between that review process and the EIR process and the Planning Commission study and council study, probably a dozen different hearings with regard to the development of the old City Hall site. And throughout that process, the area that the staff had decided would be appropriate to use for the existing general plan allowed square footage of 75,000 square feet was always open and known. No one challenged it at that time, but today, they challenge that you ought not have used that number in 2013 and 2014. But I think that's a matter that was resolved when you did it, and it wasn't challenged, and nothing was hidden. Staff, as the city attorney said, was very clear. I've been involved in this project since the very beginning. And the second thing I would say is the idea that somehow, in Mr. Mosher's letter, the developer always planned to build something larger and just didn't tell you in the beginning. And I'm just here to say that's not true. This is something that has been worked very closely with the city, including the negotiation of a long-term land lease. And the developer in design development, you know, when you come to you with a project, we come with you with a set of plans that the architects have devoted a good deal of time to, but it isn't by any means a finished product. And when you get down to the critical parts, when you start to bring in your kitchen people, and your people are going to run the spawn, the people are going to have to have the offices and store things, you suddenly start to figure, well, maybe we need a little more room here or there, and that was where the genesis of seeking more room came from. And it did not arise until after this project had been, in fact, approved by the Coastal Commission. It's a visitor-serving project. It's good for the city. The neighborhood supports it, as you can see from the various letters you have in your packet. And we would ask you to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission, allow us to proceed to amend our coastal development permit, and to amend your local coastal program accordingly.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Bring it back up here, Mr. Saj.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, since I'm on a roll here, Mr. Mosher's got it all wrong, too. I mean, he gets up here and comes up with his own interpretations of green light, and he clearly doesn't understand it. And he makes these comments that, like, we're doing things continually on anything dealing with green light to manipulate the charter amendment around. And our staff continually comes back with cogent, clear analysis of how we apply the green light initiative. And he just has it wrong. So I'm going to move that we uphold the Planning Commission and we approve our recommendation items B through F in the agenda.
All right. Any other comments? Let's call for the vote. I think this is, I'll just say, as a representative for this area, I'm very supportive of this. I think it is a modest adjustment and conformance, as we've heard from staff, with existing code and ordinances. So I am thrilled to let this project continue to move forward.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title, 2016-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment number CA 2016-003 for the Lido House Hotel project located at 3300 Newport Boulevard and 475 32nd Street. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Item number 16, amendments to the coastal land use plan and policy, L12, and the establishment of a comprehensive program for properties along East Ocean Front to allow encroachments and to remove unpermitted development beyond the encroachment. Staff, do you have a report, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Dixon, members of the council. This is a project that we have been working on for quite some time now, and it is, it affects the Peninsula Point area. And we've had several study sessions on this, and we've gone to the Planning Commission, and we've been working quite a while with the community out there to come up with a comprehensive program that addresses both the encroachments that exist in the Peninsula Point area on the ocean-facing side of the peninsula, as well as to couple that with a removal and replacement program. Let me walk you through the history on the project. Back in 2012, 15 property owners that are shown in, with the red dots on the exhibit above, did receive notice of violations from the California Coastal Commission regarding unpermitted development on the oceanward side of their property line. The Coastal Commission did indicate to us that they do believe that there are additional properties that are in violation, but they, at that time, hadn't, were not going to proceed with issuing notice of violations. And they were interested in having the city and the residents work together to develop a comprehensive solution. So the encroachments that exist beyond the private property lines vary from property to property. And here we have an example of some grassy turf and some pavers. And here's a much more manicured approach on the right, left-hand side of your screen, and a little bit more unmanicured approach on the right-hand side. But all of these are within either the city's 15-foot encroachment, or 15-foot public right-of-way or beyond that, which is on the tidlands area. So what have we been doing in the last few years? Back in February of 2013, the City Council did direct us to seek a solution and initiated an amendment to the city's coastal land use plan. From that time forwards, we have been working with both the Coastal Commission staff and with the residents to come up with a comprehensive solution. The Coastal staff did indicate to us very clearly that nothing can be removed or replaced in this area until a coastal development permit is issued by them. And the other thing that we did commission was a removal and replacement plan for the area that's beyond the city's 15-foot right-of-way. And let me go into a little bit more detail. So in our proposed solution, the city is taking the lead role with the coastal permitting process. And that the city, by your action tonight, if you wish to go forward, would adopt a comprehensive encroachment program for the city's 15-foot right-of-way, and then also adopt a comprehensive plan to remove and replace the unpermitted development beyond the 15-foot right-of-way. And it's a little hard to tell in this graphic on the aerial, but there's, this line right here is the demarcation of the 15-foot right-of-way, and then this area, oceanward, is the tidlands or public area, or what sometimes is referred to as the sandy beach. So the areas that are included within the program start on the west at 1400 East Ocean Front, and they continue all the way down to the wedge area or to Channel Road right here. So we broke it into three segments. The green area is the 15-foot public right-of-way that's right up adjacent to the homes. And then the red area, or the pink area, shows the approximate extent of the encroachments on the sandy beach. When we first started our discussions, we originally were starting over around F Street or that, at the end of the boardwalk, this area as well, because where we're proposing to start now is at this point going east. And that area coincides with the city's public right-of-way that the city owns in fee adjacent to the homes. But if you note over in this area, which is on the next slide in a little bit more detail, there is not a 15-foot public right-of-way adjacent to the rear property lines of these homes. Instead, they have public tidlands that abut their property lines. So we are unable to do an encroachment program in that area because it's on state tidlands. So the areas excluded is 1317 and 1319 East Balboa Boulevard, and then 1320, 1322, 1324, 1354 and 58 East Ocean Front, and 107 G Street. And I do want to correct the staff report because some of those properties were all identified as East Balboa Boulevard, and these are the correct addresses of those properties that are excluded from the program. And in this area, you can see that the area, that the area adjacent to the homes does show some vegetation, but it's not as extensive as what you see as you go further east towards Channel Road. And this is something that we can address at a later area, at a later time. So again, the proposed program applies to 1400 East Ocean Front, all the way eastward to Channel Road, and includes 66 properties, and, as I said before, has the two components. So part one, the encroachment program, it's intended to be consistent with the existing West Newport encroachment program that currently is within the city's coastal land use plan and reflected in City Council policy L12. And basically, what is allowed within the city's 15-foot right-of-way is minimal improvements, and anything that requires a building permit is prohibited. There's no allowance for pressurized irrigation. There can be nothing above 36 inches in height, and there can be no impacts to public access. And any landscaping is restricted from, in the, adjacent to dune habitat because everything needs to be native vegetation. So in order for a similar program to be established for East Ocean Front, we need amendments to both the city's coastal land use plan and to Council policy L12. And here is the, an aerial view of the West Newport area. It's a little difficult to see, but this is the private property line, and then you can see some, the improvements that are a very consistent line, which is, again, demarks the 15-foot right-of-way. And here are some examples. This is a street-end improvement, so this is the actual 15-foot right-of-way line, but you can see there's low walls and some patio area. So as part of the encroachment program, the city does require an encroachment fee to be charged for the West Newport area for participating owners. And the fee was based, at the time it was done, was adopted by council, and it was done on market considerations. And there's also a requirement in Council policy L12 that says the fee, the fee is also based on the depth of the encroachment. So at this time, staff is not recommending that a fee be adopted for East Ocean Front, but rather that the fee be adopted once we have an approval from the Coastal Commission. And at that time, the fee will be based on City Council policy F7, which requires the appropriate market appraisals for the property. The fees that are used for including public access onto the, really for the peninsula as a whole, and some of the items that the fee could potentially be used for would be a shuttle program for the peninsula, improving the boardwalk transition from East Street to Ocean Boulevard, improving pedestrian, bicycle access in McFadden Square, providing additional parking on the peninsula, and improving the safety of the existing boardwalk for all types of users, improving ADA access, and also increasing lifeguarding services down at the Balboa Peninsula Point beaches. Any of these improvements would be subject to appropriate City Council and public review and coastal development permit. We're not recommending any particular improvement as part of tonight's action, but this is a range of menu options that could be considered by the council at a later date for using the fees. And so the second part of this plan is to include and approve and implement a removal and replacement plan for the area that's beyond the 15-foot right-of-way. And so we did hire a consultant who did a parcel-level analysis of the entire area and who came up with a plan for removal and stabilization of the sand, and, as well as included a three-year maintenance and monitoring program. And that was prepared back in November 2013, and we would submit that to the Coastal Commission for review and approval as part of this program. So we are also recommending that the city should coordinate the removal plan and secure the appropriate coastal development permit. The estimated cost for implementation of the plan was about $250,000 for the removal and for the three-year maintenance. And there's a recommendation that a portion, either a portion or all the costs could be determined, could be recovered from the adjacent property owners. But again, that would be determined after we received a coastal development permit through council review and a meeting on the cost recovery. So what we're asking you this evening is to adopt the resolution that, one, amends the coastal land use plan, two, amends council policy L12, and then, finally- the coastal land use plan, two, amends Council Policy L-12, and then finally adopts the East Ocean Front Comprehensive Encroachment and Removal and Replacement Plan, and then direct us to submit both the coastal land use plan amendment and a CDP application for the program to the Coastal Commission. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it up to council. Mr. Pieter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kim, can you explain how this coastal land use amendment fits into our current one that's before the Coastal Commission, hopefully in August, September?
So, what we're asking tonight is for an amendment to the coastal land use plan, which is one component of the city's coastal, local coastal program. So, what we're preparing right now is the implementation plan, which is the zoning component. So, we can go ahead and move forward on the implementation plan and get that through coastal and adopted. And then I expect that this will trail it by a few months, and then we'll just have to amend our certified coastal land use plan at that time. So, it'll follow. It's not something that we can incorporate now because we have not yet made the application, and I think it would require a significant amount of discussion with coastal staff. So, we'll have to trail.
So, basically, to put it in our terms, city terms, what's before the Coastal Commission now is basically call it the general plan aspect of it, and then we have to follow up with that and an implementation plan. And this would, in effect, fold in at that time, and we'd have to go back and adjust the general plan afterwards.
Right. So, technically, we have our general plan adopted and certified, so we are processing the zoning component to our LCP. So, once that's in place, which is what we're hoping we'll get in the next couple of months, we'll have to follow up with an amendment to the...
Okay, so this is just purely a follow-up amendment?
Right, right, right. It's a very specific amendment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions up here? Why don't we open it to the public, please? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Jim McGee, and I represent the Balboa Peninsula Oceanfront Encroachment Committee. The committee is comprised of homeowners who own residences on the oceanfront between East Street and the wedge. The committee has met extensively with its constituents and strongly recommends that the council adopt the proposed resolution before it, which in turn would adopt the amendment to the coastal land use plan, an amendment to Council Policy L-12, and also the comprehensive removal and encroachment plan. This matter has been actively discussed over the past nine years, has been addressed at two council study sessions, at two council public hearings, was recently addressed in a public hearing before the Planning Commission and approved, in which they recommended this action to the council. We've also had dozens of meetings with the staff. We've had meetings with the Coastal Commission enforcement staff in terms of getting together and trying to forge a comprehensive policy that would do nothing more than provide the same benefits and assign the same obligations to the oceanfront residents, as has been enjoyed by the West Newport residents since the coastal land use plan was adopted relative to that issue back in 1991. I've worked with the city's staff, and I think that there were a couple of changes that were agreed to in connection with Council Policy L-12, and I'm not sure that that's before you, but perhaps Ms. Brant can address that issue. If the proposed resolution is adopted by the City Council, the Balboa Peninsula Point Oceanfront Encroachment Committee would look forward to working with the city to seek Coastal Commission approval of the LCUP and the removal plan itself. And while it's never easy to get Coastal Commission approval, we feel confident that a unified approach from both the residents and the city will enhance the potential for a successful outcome. And for that reason, we recommend to the City Council that it adopt the proposed resolution with the several changes to Council Policy L-12 that had been discussed with staff. Thank you, and I can answer any questions if there are any.
Do I have any questions of the speaker? Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
My name is Alan Steiner. I live at 1354 and 1358 East Ocean Front. There's two individual lots that we own that we have a second home on, and I agree with everything, and I've been working hard with the committee. I'm just a little confused, and if we can show the picture of the eight houses again that are on tidlands property. Tidlands has never been mentioned in 50 years on the oceanfront. 50 years ago, there was a lawsuit between the city, the state, and an individual, and a new line was established 50 years ago in 1965, and the word "tidlands" was used. Until three months ago, tidlands was never mentioned as part of the oceanfront property, which I don't have a problem with, and I have two lots on that. It's just confusing why that's tidlands when everything talks about San Ana River to Channel Road, and now it says San Ana River to Channel Road excluding these eight homes. So, we agree with the committee and trying to work out a nice arrangement. We're sort of excluded from the L-10 and everything else on that. So, I just wanted to bring up that I'm willing to work, since I have 25% of the property, two out of eight, I'm willing to work with the committee and work with the commission and work with the Coastal Commission. Everybody's, I've called everybody. I've called tidlands, I've called city, I've called state. Nobody understands why that's tidlands property. Obviously, it is because the city has said it is, but nowhere in any documentation does it say that that's tidlands property. So, I just wanted to volunteer to be on the committee, work out with the property owners, the eight property owners and the city, to work out something for those eight homes, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steph, Kimberly, do you want to comment on that?
Well, I do appreciate Mr. Steiner's comments, and it was after some very extensive research we've done, we did internally and looking at all of our deed documents, and we did determine that we did not have any right-of-way adjacent to those properties, and therefore, the state tidlands went directly up to the rear of those single-family homes or those residential lots. So, we haven't been able to find anything contrary.
Okay, thank you.
And as a further clarification, it's not that just tidlands just begin there. The tidlands are throughout the entire beach area. Just, we do have that right-of-way, the 15-foot right-of-way at the properties past Mr. Steiner's home.
That goes back for decades and decades. Is that correct?
Generally, yes, yeah.
Mr. Mayor Protam. Muldoon?
Is there a way we can acquire that property, have it be a right-of-way?
I don't know. That's a good, that's a very good question. It's something that we could certainly look into.
I guess, just thinking out loud with you, Mr. Mayor Protam, this would be something we would ask of the State Lands Commission to, in effect, take a similar right-of-way ownership over tidlands that we have in an existing place. I guess I'm just not optimistic, but it doesn't mean we couldn't try.
I think we have a great relationship with State Lands Commission. We all remember that, and I think it's worth a try. If the staff is willing to, and my colleagues will indulge me. Thanks.
We still are doing public comments. Any other public comments? No? Any other comments up here? I will make a motion to, oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mary Dixon. Mr. McGee did refer to his letter of July 22 to the City Council where he made several recommendations for amendments to your resolution that you're adopting this evening. Mr. McGee and I did go over his proposed changes and did agree that there were two that were appropriate to be made this evening. If you don't mind, I'll read them into the record.
Please do. Yes.
So, the first one had to do with Attachment L-12, which is on page 16-23 of your staff report, and it has to, the proposed change is in Section K, Annual Fee, item number one, and I'll just read the revised language. "The fees based on the depths of encroachment shown below shall be established by resolution of the City Council after appropriate public review, shall be based on appropriate land appraisal, shall be based on City Council Policy F-7 and paid annually as a condition of the issuance of the encroachment permits." And it's just a reference, again, to City Council Policy F-7. And the final change is on page 16-25, paragraph three, the last paragraph of Policy L-12, and it reads in its entirety, "Subsequent to the reconstruction of all West Newport street ends, at least 85% of the fees generated by encroachments will be used for the construction of improvements which directly benefit the beach-going public, such as parking spaces, transportation alternatives, restrooms, vertical or lateral walkways along the beach, and similar projects, subject to appropriate public review and permits, including a coastal development permit if required."
That same language would be incorporated to apply. Is that, okay.
Yes.
All right. I will make a motion to support all of the above, resolution to move this forward to the Coastal Commission. Call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Item number 17, annual update to fees and charges. So, I think we'll...
Madam Mayor and council members, this next item involves something we bring to you regularly about fees and charges. There is a fairly long presentation that we could give to you. I know the Finance Committee has heard this whole item, so three of you are quite familiar with it. And I guess I'd leave that up to you if you want to delve into a certain area of the fees, or none of the presentation, or all the presentation.
Let's just, we'll do questions, public questions. Thank you. Dan M. Any comments from the public? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This is a pretty thick and detailed report to comment on in three minutes. So, the first comment I wanted to make is the proposed fee schedule layout that I see here is a lot clearer than the one that was presented to the Finance Committee, and I think it's a great improvement over the fee schedules that we've seen in the past. In some years, all we've seen is the changes. It was very hard to find the fees. I think there's still room for improvement, though. Some very simple suggestions would be, for instance, to put the various departments alphabetically so people had some way going through these many pages to find whether the fees for a particular department were, and perhaps even alphabetize some of the things or make them more logical under that. Second comment I wanted to make is I kind of felt like I really shouldn't have to be commenting on this tonight because you have both an ordinance, which is about the cost recovery schedule, and you have a fee schedule that's based on that ordinance, but the ordinance hasn't been adopted yet. The ordinance is just being introduced tonight. This is the so-called first reading. The second reading is where the public has presumably had a chance to look at it. It's been published in the newspaper that you're going to be looking at it. And that would seem to me the more appropriate time after you decide if this is the proper cost recovery schedule, whether this is the proper fee schedule that you want to go with it. I would point out in the many pages of the fee schedules, there are many pages that have to do with facility rentals. And looking at the ordinance, I'm a little confused. I'm looking here at what I think is the last red-line version of the ordinance being introduced tonight. Ordinances are supposed to be correct when they're introduced and can kind of stay correct until the next meeting where they're adopted. And I see on the second page of it where there used to be a line that said, "Facility Use Fees, 50% Recovery." That's been deleted, and something totally unrelated to that, kind of like in the state legislature where they start with a resolution and completely change it. It's now, has nothing to do with facility use fees. I may be blind, but I looked through this several times, and then I can no longer find what the cost recovery for facilities is. Therefore, I don't know what the basis for the fees that are here are. So, perhaps there's a problem with the ordinance that needs to be corrected. And then the final comment I would want to make is one of your actions tonight is a resolution. It's Action F, Resolution 201695, has to do with waiving the fees for the use of facilities, whatever those charges might be, for the Library Foundation and the Arts Foundation. It appears to be limited to two times a year, and I think the Library Foundation uses them many more times than that. And then the whole idea of waivers is rather odd to me or not well-understood because if you look at the ordinance itself, it says the city manager can waive fees, and I think a whole lot of fees get waived, and the public really doesn't understand or know what the basis for that is or how many. And I'm wondering if there is a list of fees that are waived each year. Would be interesting to see. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you just want to comment on the ordinance, how that moved forward?
Yeah, so it will come back for a second reading. If there is a typographical error in it, then that will be corrected before it comes back.
Okay. Any more public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll come up to council.
Madam Mayor, I would move the recommended actions, A through F.
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Pieter?
I just want to make a couple of statements. One is my thanks to Kim and Simone, especially in the Building Department, in coming up with a lot of fixed fees for a lot of those items that we can identify what the scope is. And I think that's beneficial to our residents. It also encourages our staff to be more efficient because the savings comes to us. And it also keeps, as being in the service industry for several decades, there's always a tendency by people to add or pad things to certain times or jobs. So, I like the fact that that isn't an hourly rate anymore. But I do have a request regarding that, and I think you already are doing this, but I just wanted to confirm it, that you will continue to track your time that you spend on these things because some of what we did, I know, was estimated based on previous time spent on projects, but we didn't divide it up the way that we were currently proposing this time. And I would like to make sure that we're able to, a year from now, when we do this again, correct anything that we need to correct. So, I just want to be assured here that when people are plan-checking a house that's 2,500 square foot or less, we have a fixed fee associated with that. We can find that the actual cost is somewhere near or where it should be based on our fixed fee, and if not, we'll be able to make those kinds of adjustments.
Yes, Councilmember Pieter, you're correct. We are currently tracking both planning and building time from staff's standpoint for the plan check and from the inspection. So, yes, you're correct. And a year from now, we could go back and fine-tune these fees even further.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a big deal, and the staff has come a long way, and I just wanted to applaud that. And I'll call for the question.
Let's call for the vote.
As you vote, Madam Mayor, I wanted to thank the staff that worked on this, led by Teresa Schweitzer. This is a challenging effort to do appropriately, and I really appreciate Mr. Pieter's comments because we did put a lot of effort into that. So, thank you for that work.
And I think it's innovative, and I think it will serve our residents and building applicants well. So, thank you.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2016-14. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Exhibit A to the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery, Section 12.16.020, related to parking penalties, subsection 14.12.010B, related to water service fees and ratifying existing library fines. With council member Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right. Item number 18, direction regarding Resolution Number 2015-44, related to the previously proposed city charter amendment. So, do we have a comment from staff?
We don't.
Okay. Mr. Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is here because we need to ministerially deal with it, given the fact that we failed to adopt this in June. Let me remind the public what this is. It requires a supermajority vote before the council can put a tax increase measure on the ballot. Now, this is an important issue because in this fall election, three cities in Orange County will be doing exactly this. Fountain Valley, Westminster, and La Palma will be going to the voters, asking for a tax increase. Stanton did it in the last election. So, it's a more frequently occurring thing. In three out of every four... California cities, this is already the law. The voters of the state of California passed this and made it applicable to all general law cities. So, out of 400 and some cities, 300 and some of them already have this as a requirement of law. But because we're a, a charter city, we have to adopt our own individual limitation. Huntington Beach has done this years ago. Anaheim is doing it in the fall. When we put this on the ballot a year ago, that was, we were doing it in conjunction, actually, with Anaheim at the same time. I would point out that this council voted three times unanimously, each time as this moved forward. There were no objections raised. There were no concerns raised. There were no additional information requests that were raised. It's a very straightforward law that's already the law in three out of every four cities in California. So, there's no reason for us not to do this at this time. So, I would move the option here, I think it's the third option, to put this on the November 2016 ballot, and that myself, Mayor Pro Tim Muldoon, and Councilman Selich should be designated to do the pro arguments. I actually think it's inappropriate for us to designate council people unless they actually oppose this, to write the con arguments. I've seen jurisdictions get themselves in trouble where people write Trojan horse arguments. So, I think any citizen who opposes this can write their own negative arguments, if that's what they want to do. But I would propose the three of us to take the lead on, and there may be others from the community. For example, Carolyn Cavetti and the Orange County Taxpayers Association, I think they've communicated with each of you, strongly support this. So, there may be others who would sign those arguments as well. So, I would make that a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So, this obviously would be on the ballot in 2016. We, last council meeting, or a couple of council meetings ago, we're hoping to come up with some sort of compromise that would include debt, because half of the equation with government, taxation is spending. So, in thinking about this, I'm going to support Councilman Curry's desire to have five of seven to put a tax measure on the ballot, up to the people for a popular vote. But I'm going to amend that motion to add five of seven to submit to the residents, the voters, whenever a certificate of participation is sought, with a simple majority of the people needing to side with. This is similar to the threshold of a bond issuance of two-thirds, but it cuts out the loophole. The loophole is going around the voters and using certificates of participation, instead of honestly going to them to see if they're comfortable with the debt. So, I would request that this be directed to staff to prepare the ballot measure, to add that aforementioned language, and to consider this question on August 9th, in addition to then addressing who will write the pros and cons. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second. Can I have a clarification on the motion?
Yes.
So, the five out of seven would be to put certificates of participation on the ballot, and then the citizens would be able to vote on the debt? So, staff would come back with the actual language, but basically, any certificates of participation that would be issued would be required to be approved by a majority of the voters, and to get it on the ballot would require the same five out of seven council people to vote for it, as would a tax increase that's proposed now.
It's the same threshold at the council level, regardless of which five of the seven vote on it, and it requires a majority of the people vote. So, in this case, hypothetically, the Civic Center would not exist unless the majority of the, of the people of Newport Beach said they wanted to do a certificate of participation.
That sounds great.
Point of clarification, Mayor Protam Muldoon, you said it amended motion, but then it was seconded by Councilmember Piattar. So, is that a substitute motion you meant instead of amended?
Thank you for the correction, I believe so.
Can I clarify one point as well? Would this be one ballot question, or would it be separate ballot questions?
Yes, this would be one.
Mr. Curry.
Well, first of all, Mr. City Attorney, is this a valid motion, given the fact that this has not been properly agendized to deal with the issue of debt?
Well, it would be, I think it is appropriate, but because it would be coming back at a future meeting. So, it's a, it seems to me to be a valid substitute motion.
Well, on what basis is it appropriate? Wait, wait, wait. On what basis is it appropriate? It wasn't agendized. It wasn't listed for discussion. It wasn't brought up, and let's bring this item back under previous items. We had an agenda item, says I want this brought back to the City Council.
I don't believe it violates the Brown Act.
This was a point of order. I requested it be returned on the 9th, so we're complying with the timeline.
Well, let me then discuss the merits of Mr. Muldoon's proposal, which was, I think, a variation of Mr. Piattar's proposal from a couple of months ago. Whereas, three out of four cities in California have the provision that I proposed as law already, not a single California jurisdiction has the proposal that Mr. Muldoon has as part of their law. In fact, I'm not aware of any jurisdiction, given the way it was originally proposed by Mr. Piattar, anywhere in the United States of America, or the world as a whole, where that provision exists. Certificates of participation are lease obligations, and so that includes just about any type of lease that the city would do, for office space, for police cars, for office equipment, for just about anything. So, to just toss that out there willy-nilly is extremely poor public policy, and it's designed to create chaos, and it's designed to limit the ability of the city to do what it needs to do. So, let's just be very clear that, that this is a poorly thought-out poison pill. That is not the law in any other California jurisdiction, or any other jurisdiction anyplace else. And if you people vote for it, you'll be the only four people in America who do. So, I will oppose the amendment. We can hopefully separate this motion, and move forward, and do the people's business in a good way, without trying to come in here at the 11th hour, without the Finance Committee's review of this proposal, by the way, which was originally sent to, they haven't had a chance to look at it yet, and consider it. It would hamper the, the ability of the city to address the people's needs for generations. It will, it will live on, as I think I described it before, as a little turd in the city long after you leave, and we can't afford to have that happen.
Mr. Piattar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I know Mr. Curry made a living selling these to cities, and made a very good living, and so does company made lots of money, his former company. But the reality of it is, you know, it's the death of some cities. I've had long discussions with Howard Jarvis Association, and John Kapal, and he believes wholeheartedly that, that the whole idea of certificates of participation are an end run around Prop. 13, and the bonding requirements for, for voting on the taxpayers. I'm in favor of full disclosure, and I know Mr. Curry doesn't like that, because he can't do what he wants to do if the voters actually have a say in it. So, I don't know why he's so hot, so bothered by this, because he's leaving the council anyway, after leaving the turd in the punchbowl of $128 million worth of debt to this city, and now we're trying to prevent that from happening again. But I can understand why Mr. Curry might be against that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protam Muldoon.
Hi, thank you. Dan, could you please define what certificates of participation are?
Equestration.
COPs.
COPs. COPs are a method of lease financing a, a facility in, in which bondholders participate in the lease revenues in financing a, an improvement.
Can we still lease property without COPs being considered?
Yes, you can lease, you can lease a copier, but, but I don't think you would be able to, to issue a, a COP.
Well, let's be clear what COPs are.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
Wait, wait, wait. One at a time.
I ask that we be respectful here. There's no need to curse. There's no need to be derogatory. Is a city able to function without COPs?
This is my opinion. I think it would be an extremely bad idea to cut off that avenue. This is my personal opinion.
Sure. Which is why I'm not cutting off that avenue. I'm saying the voters would decide it. But are there other revenues to get revenue?
Other avenues?
Okay, I'm just going to cut it shy here, because I, I see your bias, and I understand. There are many ways a city is able to get funds, should we feel that we need them. Now, if you want to issue bond debt, it's up to the voters issuing a bond, and it requires two-thirds of the vote. We have a large line of credit immediately available to us, an emergency situation, which Dan's very familiar with. COPs are not being completely ruled outright, but there is false information given about it. COPs are used to raise funds based on, you know, anticipated revenue, so that funds are available immediately. We still have other ways of getting funds in situations where it should be quickly assessed, case of assessment district, borrowing, using reserves. But what's troublesome to me is that we don't, the opposition does not want the voters to decide. The voters are going to have a say, just like they do in bond debts, and just like they do in issuance of bonds. And the COP is the way that bureaucrats have decided to get around the voters. It, it's very sneaky. It is legal. I'm very proud to see that we would be the first city to do this, and I suspect many other cities will follow, because many limited government advocates are, are pushing for this. I don't see any risk in it all, because if the city decides this is something we need, then the voters will vote for it. I understand that those who were involved in the issuance of the Civic Center, or the COPs who are at the Civic Center, take it very personally, and, and this is offensive to them. It's not meant to be. It's meant to put the power back in the hands of the voters.
Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would appreciate the fact that we say we don't want to have profanity or derogatory terms, and I take offense to Mr. Piattar's personalization of this issue with Mr. Curry. Secondly, I don't believe that Mr. Matashevitz has a bias. He is a professional who we use to provide us with the inputs on whether or not finances and finance matters are addressed. Please do not refer to his professional opinion as a bias. He is giving us counsel.
I did not request that counsel. I requested a different question than what he answered to. So, the objection in court is objection, non-responsive.
Mr. Curry.
Well, first of all, let me ask the city manager, in your professional opinion, is adopting this policy for the City of Newport Beach something that is in the best interest of the city?
You know what? I, I don't feel comfortable answering that question without presenting you with the pros and cons of each position.
Well, let me then, and I appreciate the difficulty you're in, but let me just go back, because Mr. Muldoon asserted that we have other ways of getting money. Yes, we can spend down all of our reserves. Assessment districts actually do require a vote, so they would have to have a vote as well. Anything that's a multi-year obligation under the state constitution, if it's a multi-year loan at the bank, very, unless it's got an abatement provision, such as a lease. That's why leases work, because if the building falls down, we don't have to pay, under the California law, we don't have to pay the payments. But the building's likely not going to fall down. That's why leases are work, and that's why if we make this blanket prohibition, whether you call it certificates of participation, or lease obligation bonds, or lease certificates, or simply a lease, it falls under the same provision of law and the Constitution, and it would have the same limitation and require a voter approval, if that's what we're foolish enough to write into the law. That's how it works.
Mr. Selich.
You know, rather than, rather than do either of these, I'd prefer that we do none of them, and that we have thoughtful discussion on this whole thing, and, you know, to try and take Councilmember Muldoon's idea and throw it into this at the last minute, try and make a deadline to get on a ballot, doesn't give time for good thoughtful analysis. So, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to end up going down that road, I'd just assume that, you know, we not try and get it on this year's ballot, and have a more thoughtful discussion of it, because just trying to, on the fly, do this without good analysis doesn't make any sense to me.
Any other comments? Do we open it up to the public? See no comments?
Madam Mayor, I would ask that we separate the question, vote on Mr. Muldoon's proposal, and then we'll vote on my proposal.
As a form of a motion, is there a second?
I object. It's a substitute motion. You have to vote on the substitute motion first.
That is right. There's a current substitute motion on the table, so we need to vote on the substitute motion first. So, call the vote on the substitute motion.
With Councilmembers Curry, Selich, and Petros voting no, the motion carries 4-3. Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the previous.
We are going to adjourn this evening in the memory of retired fire chief James Jim Reed. Retired Newport Beach Fire Chief Jim Reed passed away July 12th. He served in the Newport Beach Fire Department for 30 years. Chief Reed was born in Portola, California, and graduated from Tustin Union High School. He attended Santa Ana Community College and USC, and he served in the United States Navy. Chief Reed joined the Newport Beach Fire Department in 1961. During his career, he was responsible for the Emergency Operations Center at Fire Station Number Three, located in Newport Center. He worked on the Fire Department's Hazardous Materials Team and the Emergency Medical Technician Program for the city's firefighters. He quickly rose through the ranks and became Fire Chief in 1978, where he served until his retirement in 1991. Those who worked with him here in Newport Beach during that time called him a thoughtful, dedicated, kind, and hard-working chief. Throughout his long career and after retirement, he was an inspiration to many in the fire service. Chief Reed was preceded in death by his wife of 45 years, Sharon Lynn. He is survived by his wife Sherry, sons Kevin and David, both of whom followed in his footsteps with careers in the fire service. Daughter-in-laws Christina and Carla, five grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. Services were held this past Friday, July 22nd, at Fairhaven Memorial Park in San Ana. And we are adjourned. Thank you.